Today, I'm super excited for it. Okay, time is 6:05. I'd like to call the meeting order for Wednesday, September 30th at 6:05 PM. Yes, can we stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Let's do that.
Oh, now I gotta stand. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Not in sync there.
Very hard to do.
I don't think we've ever been in sync for that. Number three, approval of the agenda for September 30th, 2020.
I guess I'll make a motion to approve it. I don't have it, so.
Motion approved made by Berube. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Sutherland. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Well, the only thing we have left is the presentation and discussion of park options.
Right, so what we'll be discussing tonight, there's a few options for the park. And I did take a video walkthrough, so if you want, we can start off with that. I'll share my screen so you can see the walkthrough and the progress as of today. And then by that time, I think Nick will be on and he can elaborate on what has transpired so far and what the different options are. So let me get to my screen share. My video. Video is here. Okay, here it is. And then, let's see, where is my video? Okay, here we go. Pause that and share screen. Okay. Do you guys, I don't think it worked. Share. Okay, can you guys see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, cool. So I hope it's not the version of volume because it was really windy. But I just did a walkthrough. This was going into the park. You can see where the old pathway was taken out and lines where the new proposed pathway will be. If at any time you want me to stop, so you can like, look at something, I can do that too. There's the playground.
Is that barrier gonna be filled with mulch?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
And what's the circle?
We will ask Nick that, but I think that is like a transfer or like a ramp or something.
I'm on now. Hello, everyone.
Hi, Nick.
Hi, Nick.
That is similar to what, I'm sorry, that's similar to what is at McKinley to put back-to-back benches.
So you can see where the old path is and where the new proposed path would run through.
Okay, can you? You, Nick, you're reducing the linear foot by 475 linear feet on the pathway?
Yeah. The idea behind that was to kind of gain space. Really, all we did is we took that north path and brought it in, probably about 25, 30 feet, and eliminated the Masonic side pass path. As far as a sidewalk going east and west, there's already one outside the fence, so that's kind of where that theory came from.
Are you gonna do anything with that entrance on the east side?
Yes.
Plan that.
It's gonna be wider.
So you're gonna have this path go to the corner like it used to?
Yep, exactly, exactly like it used to. Yep.
So that's gonna be on.
Going to, uh, doesn't show that.
Well, that drawing's just a rough sketch.
Nice job, though. I will say.
Thanks. I was just kind of doing it together at the last minute, just to kind of give an idea on paper.
Yeah, I went out there this morning and it's, good job. Thank you. What about the other entrance on the west side?
Both entrances will stay. We'll stay. We're gonna, um, we're gonna meet to both entrances.
So we're gonna still have two sidewalks on the west side?
Yes.
Are you gonna replace that asphalt there?
No, the only path that'll get replaced is inside the park itself. The pathway that's in front of the pool will stay.
Okay.
Nick, do you wanna like start from the beginning, but where we're at now, and then what the actual three options are?
Yeah, and I apologize for kind of late at the last minute. Dana, can you re-forward me those, that memo that I sent out? Mine's buried so deep in the email. So kind of where this generated from is when I first sat down with Michigan Rack who got the pathways originally, of course, their interest was less of the fact that they didn't get the playground. Dan didn't say that or Craig didn't say that, but you could kind of just tell. Their bread and butter obviously is in a playground. So at that point, I really never heard back from them since the original meeting, which to me was fine because it was gonna be a tough blend of Michigan Rack and Great Lakes anyway, so we feel we can do the pathway in-house and save a substantial amount of money. That's kind of where we were able to generate the money for the fence. So the three options will still generate money in order to do the fence and signage. We'd like to see us do concrete. It'll have a much better look. It'll have a lot of longevity. I know we had that back-and-forth conversation as far as asphalt or concrete, but that's why there's three options. So option one, putting the pathway right back into the way it is, and that is a quote from Unlimited Asphalt Brian that does our work every year. And then the second option is do asphalt in the next proposed sidewalk or to do concrete in the proposed new sidewalk. And then with gaining that ground, if we ever want to do a pavilion or something in the future, there's plenty of room now to put pavilion off that pathway, which will give somebody place to sit, picnic instead of, I felt that the part really wasn't big enough to justify a walking path or a circle path. So at this point, we still have a nice eight-foot in-and-out pathway that'll tie in nice to the play structure and give us room to add a pavilion in the future. I think we'll have a really good look. So that's kind of where this all kind of generated from. So I apologize that it was kind of at the last minute, but as the park was starting to take shape and we were starting to pull the pathway out, this kind of made sense. I guess what's kind of everybody's thought as far as eliminating that roundabout pathway and just doing a eight-foot in-and-out pathway?
I like the new pathway. I think that, you know, having more space in the park to potentially do other things is better, and I agree with you that it's such a small walking path anyway. But so if the concrete's gonna give the longevity, I would go with the, my personal opinion is the concrete with the new pathway.
Yeah, and also it's getting so close because the trees are so mature. It's really affecting the pathway too. Go ahead, Dave.
I liked the new pathway. I didn't at first, but I went and walked it today and checked out the park and I think it's really nice. I don't like the idea of eight foot wide. I think it should be smaller because you're really, it's like having grossback cut through your city.
Yeah, the only reason I did that, Dave, is for the fact of people passing, strollers, kids. That's being the fact that we're eliminating that in-and-out path, that that's why I came up with it being a little bit wider to give that back and forth, being that it is going to be the only in-and-out. That's how I came up with eight feet, but we definitely could shrink it, but now is our time to make it that wide, and that was kind of the concept around making it that wide. You know, if a family of two or three with a stroller is coming past another family of, you know, two or three to give that room of of comfortable in-and-out, that's how I came up with that.
Yeah, but it's like a driveway running through the middle of the park. It's the same width as a single-car driveway.
True, very true.
But I'll go with whatever everybody agrees with. I'm just throwing out there what I like and don't like.
A typical sidewalk, residential sidewalk is only five feet, so that's how I kind of came up with, you know how tight it is on a residential sidewalk to pass somebody at five feet? So that's how I came up with that additional three, just to give that room of comfort coming through.
And the only, the only other real concern is the west side because it makes it look like a patchwork. You have this beautiful park, and then in front of Somerset, you have nine feet, I think it's nine feet of asphalt and a five-foot sidewalk. And the, if you put concrete in the park, which I would prefer, and then run it into the asphalt next to the concrete, it just, it just does something for the the look of the park, that's in my opinion. I think that asphalt and that fence should be pulled out. We've gone above the fence, so I understand why people like it so it can get from the parking lot to the park and worry about the kids. But having that transition, I think is kind of, kind of bad. Other than that, I think, I, I think it's a great idea to have it run through the park the way it does instead of trying to make a loop out of it, picking up all that space. I have to agree with you.
Okay, I like it. As far as, I agree as far as that concrete connecting to that original asphalt, which is fine because all that concrete at Somerset Pool outside of the parking lot needs to be adjusted anyways. So at that point, we can continue that sidewalk to the pool and around the way it's all concrete and eventually mansion up the Davison sidewalk also, which is concrete.
Would look nice.
Commissioner Berube.
Yeah, I, I was kind of with Dave. I didn't kind of like the pathway at first, but now I see it a little bit better picture, and I do agree with the eight-foot, the increasing it to eight-foot. However, I am for the asphalt. I think the cement will be too white and glaring, and you have to stop and think that council voted 7-0 for asphalt, not for concrete.
True, very true.
Also, on this, the circle, which you said were gonna be back-to-back benches, it says 16 by 16 foot there. How are they back-to-back? One facing the path and one facing the? Okay.
One facing the structure and one facing the volleyball court.
Okay.
That was just an idea. That was just totally an idea. Kind of just mimicking what we recently just did at McKinley that easily can just be pulled out and we can find another spot to put benches. That was just an idea that I threw at the last minute, so. Just to give some.
I think I'd rather see them in a separate, separate location, maybe even, even including another one. But my question is, on option three, which is the asphalt, eight-foot wide, the total is 28,685, including the park fence, the parking lot fence, and the painting of the fence posts and the stone and forms, and the eight-foot asphalt versus the 39,685, which was originally stated.
Originally Michigan Rack's proposal.
Okay, now I'm gonna go out on a limb here. Since you have that extra, what was it here? 10,555. What would it cost to put up a pavilion?
That's a good question. I recently.
A small structure, you know?
I think there is gonna, exactly, it's a good question. I started to look into it with Fort Frazier. I didn't dig into that because I didn't want to overwhelm everything with this as far as a pavilion, but I do think that could be enough money to possibly put up a small pavilion. It's gonna be, it's gonna be tight though because we're gonna have to put concrete to it to where that's gonna be an added cost, but as far as the pavilion itself, there may be enough money to put one up, absolutely.
I think, I would like to see that option rather than reducing the price, you know? Putting more in there and maybe another bench, a bench over on the the east side of the playground.
Well, at that point, Commissioner Berube, if I could, if I could, then I know council was very adamant about asphalt and maybe we can take it back to them. But if you take McKinley, for instance, all that cement work that we did over there, how good that looks coming in and out of those play structures. If you turn that around and make that asphalt, I don't think it has that curb appeal that it does with concrete over at McKinley. So I know it has a nice clean look, but it would be such a fresh look if we did concrete coming in and out of that park and eventually connecting it out in front of the pool and out to Davison. It has such a good look. And it would be positive, more money too. I know it's a matter of opinion and it's only mine.
Because you're, you're looking at a greener area where you're gonna be putting a pavilion in. When you go to McKinley, you're right there in the, in the parking lot, and then it's just all cement right there where with Somerset, it's gonna be set back in.
True, true.
I like the bright look of concrete. I, I mean, I think it looks really clean and nice. I, I don't know, the concrete.
But again, that's not what, what council had voted on 7-0.
Absolutely, they did. Right, they were definitely more for asphalt. I think they're, it was more geared because of maintenance, which there's, there's both sides to maintenance of asphalt and concrete, right? You get more longevity out of concrete, obviously, and there's more maintenance to asphalt, but yet you can replace asphalt easier than concrete. So they both go hand-in-hand both ways, as far as that goes.
I think it would look nice with the black fence, and by the way, I like the black fence. I painted my black years ago.
Yeah, yeah. Sorry, that was another, I know that was a decision that, or something we have talked about with the fence, but once that play structure started going up, that fence, it just stood out. It was like bad, so it had to come down and we seem to be making it work with redoing the pathway. So we're in a, we're in a win-win situation with these options, so, you know.
I actually went by and thought the guy didn't have a tape measure and was trying to measure the fence, but he had a sheet in his hand, and they were blocking the overspray.
Oh, yeah, that was Kenny Peyton. Yeah, yeah, that was Ken Peyton, yeah. Yeah, he does a great job.
I have a question, I'm sorry. When we originally, through all of this, I forget, I have a bad memory. When we, the quote for concrete, was DPW gonna do it originally or no?
No. Well, originally, Michigan Rack was doing the pathway.
Okay, alright.
I didn't really throw us into the ring until of late, just for the fact that I know the guys can do it.
And then the option two and option three, the only difference in price is because we're taking, you'd be taking up some of the pathway? For option two? Okay.
Well, yes, and then option, option one is putting the pathway right back together, yeah.
Okay.
The reason the reduction is in price is, I had Brian from Unlimited Asphalt come out who, they said he does our work every year, so he gave us, and that's what does helping doing the prep too, so. And he gave us a really good price on putting it back in, so.
Um, I have a question, Nick, a couple of things. I like the way the path is going. Right through the park, I think that's a great idea instead of going around the park. I do like the cement ideal. I know that's not the way council wanted to go. I do agree with you, Nick, when it comes to the brightness of a park, it makes it look more clean. So I like the cement, but I, I understand what Nancy's saying too. That's not what council wants to go with. They wanted to go with asphalt. Either way, I think the way the path is and the way the bench, the circle that you made, that's, I like that with benches there too, so.
I know time is critical and I know we have a meeting coming up on October, and maybe, maybe I could have Mark put it back on the agenda and maybe get a second vote to it, possibly. And without rushing it, I know these, these weeks and these days are critical for us as far as pouring concrete, but I think at this point, it's worth waiting and maybe taking it back to him and see if we can't, you know, maybe we could vote tonight and maybe our recommendation tonight, they would give us that, that vote back to where it would be your decision if you agree.
Commissioner Berube.
My figures were wrong. I apologize. I went with the option three. So actually, if you back up to option two, which is the asphalt and everything else, the fence and everything, there's a difference of 12,955 that possibly you could use for a pavilion and another bench. $2,000 more. Every penny counts.
Absolutely. That's what's nice about all these options. We do have money to work with. It's just a matter of how much and what we end up doing. But yeah, of course, I, I mean, I absolutely love the look of concrete, you know? It's probably why you see most residential driveways in concrete and not asphalt, and I understand asphalt has a place and a purpose, but I think concrete just brings such a nice, fresh look to anything for that matter that it's poured around, so. That's kind of why I'm, you know, for it.
And just, I'm on the same, the concrete one is actually the one that's the cheapest. Or the, okay. Because my, I guess my recollection of the council meeting was that they went with the asphalt because at that time, that was, that was the lesser cost. So this is actually totally reversed. We have the concrete costing less and the asphalt costing a little bit more.
$10,000 difference in asphalt to the concrete for Michigan Rack. The big cost savings is for the fact that we can do it in-house. We don't do asphalt in-house, so that's why we're able to gain that savings.
I'm sure they might change their mind then.
Commissioner Cass. Yeah.
Before we finish everything, could you show that, the walkthrough video again one more time?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, I can do that, and you guys can even still kind of chat if you'd like.
Go ahead, Dana, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, you're okay. I was just gonna say, you know, the parks that I go to in more like affluent areas too, like Rochester Hills and things like that, most everything that I've been seeing lately is concrete. I have a friend that lives there and they redid a park right by her house recently, and it just, yeah, it just really brightened everything up. It just seems like that's the way that a lot of communities are going with the concrete and the asphalt is becoming a bit more, I don't know, dated-looking.
Well, there is, our concrete coming up in this video next to the, the drinking fountain, so we can see how that looks against like the grass and whatnot.
Christina and Nick, I don't know if you guys can answer this question or not. If it's $10,000 less, the concrete, what we, we brought to council in the first place, would we have to go back to council even though we're using concrete instead of the asphalt because it's $10,000 less?
Well, I think like Christian Berube said, you know, they did
Right, right.
vote for asphalt, so in a sense, would we be running against their vote and what they?
No, I'm not saying running against their vote. I'm just saying is that, do we have to bring it to the council meeting or can we do like a, like a memo? And see what they're, I don't know.
Let me talk to Mark tomorrow and see maybe if he can possibly do it by email. I don't necessarily have the answer to that question.
Why, why don't we, why don't we present our, I'll type up like a memo and give it to Mark and he can send it out, and if he hears any kind of, you know, pushback, any, anybody saying that they have concerns and want to bring it to the meeting, then we can halt it, but then we also have the option to go forward because as, as I understand it, the council appropriates the funds and they have already done that. And we're not changing the scope of work entirely. It's just that we've come another way to actually do the work. So I mean, I guess it would be up to what the city manager feels is, is proper and, you know, if council requests to pull it and bring it into the meeting.
Oh, yeah, and I understand it. I was just wondering if that was an option. I have another question, I'm sorry. On the video, it showed the pathway and then it shows the drinking fountain was, would be facing the opposite way of the pathway. Is, would it still stay that way or would it be switched around? I know that sounds weird, but it looked like it was the opposite way of the pathway.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Where you'd have to like step off the pathway and go around the drinking fountain to drink out of it?
Right.
That's gonna get redone.
Okay.
Yep, that, that concrete's gonna come out. Glad you noticed it, good point. That concrete's all gonna come out and we're gonna put a half-moon that's gonna incorporate the drinking fountain to the path.
Oh, nice.
Okay.
Sorry, we should have sprayed that in.
Any other clips that you have?
Commissioner LaCass.
The path that was taken out was grassy part of the budget for the path budget? Does that make sense? Because there, how, how are, what's the amount to reseed the path that's coming out to put grass back in?
That'll have to.
To put topsoil back in and seed that path. Probably maybe 1,500 to 2,000 material, maybe on the high side.
Okay.
High side.
I just always think in my backyard because we're constantly putting down grass seed. It's a fortune with my dogs and it's a never-ending battle, so.
Commissioner Bagden, do you still have a question?
No, I was just gonna change my neutral to concrete because I just Googled known risks for children's asphalt and the sealer used on asphalt. I would prefer concrete all the stuff.
That's really insightful. That was a good, good idea to do that.
Personally, I like the concrete and if we could do it without, like, through email with council or memo or whatever. I mean, it's a big cost savings too, so.
Yeah, I'm glad, I'm glad everybody likes it and I, once again, I apologize that it's kind of, I wasn't stealing anybody's thunder or, or, or running, I just, it didn't, it really didn't start to make sense as, as it was starting to go together to just put that path back and, you know, in hindsight, putting this park together originally, you know, maybe it should have been looked at then, but you know, easier said than done, so.
I think it'll look beautiful when it's done.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be too.
Yeah.
It's already looking really good.
Oh, yeah, every time we drive by, my daughter's commenting on it. It's almost done, mom.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's always a balancing act of us biting off too much we can chew as, as an apartment, being that we have so much stuff to do. But at this point, we're making good headway and getting caught up with everything else that we're doing. Not that we're nearly done, but I feel we can take this on at the end of the year also, otherwise I wouldn't even propose this.
Well, after Commissioner Berube, I have those images of some signs. You had some signs kind of designed that could possibly fit in the park, so I will share my screen and show you guys what those look like.
Go ahead, Commissioner Berube.
Okay. As you know, I'm for asphalt, however, if you did go with concrete, now you have 20.
Sounds like we're bending you.
Wait a minute, you haven't heard the whole thing yet. Now you have 21,000, you have $21,230 over, left over, okay. You put a pavilion in there and you put some more benches in there. I'm for it.
Be bought, I get it.
As much as I don't like the concrete, but and you better have a guard there when you put it up and you put the concrete in because those little kids are gonna.
Oh, yeah.
As long as they sign it.
You know, yeah. So I mean, I would, I would go for that because a nice, a nice pavilion there, it hasn't been there, you know, before. So we're gonna do it up and I'm for it, do it up with a pavilion.
Yep, this is our last chance. To circle back to Somerset will be a long time.
Yeah.
I mean, and then if we had a pavilion, could we bring in more money for the city because we could run it out eventually?
Exactly, 100%. Okay, Nick, you want to talk about the sign and the designer that you found and I'll share pictures?
Sure, this is just a sign company that Rose actually knew that she had used once before in her condo complex, so she had reached out to him. This is just a simple. So she had reached out to him. This is just a simple generic sign, just to kind of get a base idea of what a sign. That's the old one there, obviously. Looked even worse that it, that it's pulled out. And so this is the identical size to that sign that Brett's there holding. That's, this is just a, a basic drawing of what something would look like and kind of getting a base price. This sign is just under $800.
What's it made out of?
Uh, plastic, fiberglass. I'm sorry.
Is this raised letters or inset letters?
Um, I think it's just straight across. It didn't just inside, just, it's just, um, just printed across.
So it's just flat?
Yep, just flat. Nothing too special. This is basic of all basic.
Would that be affixed to the fence, fencing?
There's the original, for size.
I like the brown and white.
I hate brown.
Yeah, I wanted a little bit more color. I, I forget what color he could not do, but like even I mentioned to Christina earlier. And first thing she said was a yellow orange. And that's what I had said, you know, something to make it pop to kind of pull out of the place structure.
I wanted to show the fence, but basically it's just black. So we'll just look.
Well, you want a color to where the white is gonna pop. The letter is gonna pop.
Yeah.
I don't know, maybe blue.
What about?
I like blue. I, I like blue too.
And the original one was blue. Blue and white, blue and white.
I'll take some designs if anybody has that, you know, artist touch.
Not me.
Me neither.
I can't even color in the lines.
Or somebody knows, somebody that wants to design a sign and I can give this to them. So if anybody.
How about Heath? How about Heath?
I was just gonna say the same thing.
Exactly. Yeah. If somebody wants to reach out to him and see if he can't put something together, I'd love, I'd love to have something creative to give him instead of just Somerset Park.
Um, what size are you talking though?
That there, I believe is 12 and a half by 63. I say at least, I don't know, maybe three, four times that width.
Well, it would be nice to have somebody who lives in Frazier, like someone in the community, design it too. And I think that could be like a cool thing to share with everyone. If for some reason he doesn't have the capacity to do it. Like he's too busy or something like that. Um, my brother is a graphic designer in LA. So, but he's obviously not local, but he could still, I'm sure he'd be happy to do something.
I'm pretty sure Heath would.
Yeah.
And Cheryl, those who have a picture of his?
I do.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So.
And he painted the bathrooms at McKinley, right?
Yeah, the mirrors in the bathroom.
Yes, yes.
Oh, cool.
But he's, he does beautiful artwork.
So is there any kind of design you'd like to incorporate? You'd have to find somebody to do it. Other than just the Somerset, because that's what Nick said. He would like something more than.
Yeah, I want, you know, with every, and every park can kind of have its own thing, you know? And then they can design one for Pompo Park and, you know, I don't think they all need to be stamped and, and sealed all the same across the city. You can't see them all next to each other.
The one that I did like, the one that's down, uh, was over at the Meadows. I liked how that had the additional, um, popping of the, like a 3D dimension.
Man, that one's in our yard right now. And then maybe they can all have their own, maybe they all can have the same logo on them at the corner or something, but yeah, have their own different design to them. But yeah, if anybody has anybody they wanna, you know, you can have them reach out to me and, you know, maybe I can, um, get the.
I can contact Heath for you.
Yeah, if you could. But I like the fact that, you know, when we first started, that's where we're kind of stretched for money. And we weren't even gonna be able to do the fence or signage. And it was just gonna be a park and a pathway and off we go. So this is nice that we're able to kind of take care of all this stuff because it will be a while before we, we circle.
Yep.
So we're gonna have this same conversation with Pompo also because we have that positive money from the pathways that I have, I've yet to run any of those numbers, but we're gonna have this same conversation with Pompo.
Awesome. I'll be looking forward to.
Yeah, because Pompo is more open too. So hopefully if there is money left over, maybe we could do something else with equipment.
Yeah.
Let's not talk about Pompo right now.
So is there?
I just wanted to plant the seed so that way you didn't sit there and say, Nick, why don't you mention Pompo when we're talking about Somerset?
That's a heck of a lot of concrete over at Pompo though.
Are there any other, uh, things about Somerset or do we want to make a motion or what, what are we thinking?
I was just about to ask the same thing, Christina.
So, I mean, I, it sounds like we're ready to make a motion. I can try. I've never made one yet, guys. So I can try. So I'll make a motion to, uh, go with the new pathway in concrete. And then also in the memo, we would discuss potentially that would we put the pavilion on there too? Okay. So to add a pavilion and additional benches with the excess funds from the smaller pathway with the concrete. Longest motion ever.
Eight foot, eight, you might want to add eight foot pathway.
Eight foot pathway, which I do like the eight foot. Too.
It's like an emotion.
Okay. I have a motion for option number one with the eight foot wide concrete and a pavilion and benches made by Commissioner Sutherland and seconded by Commissioner Bagden. All in favor?
Uh-uh, uh-uh.
Aye.
All right. I got a question.
Commissioner Ruby, I'm sorry.
Uh, are you including signage in that?
I don't know.
So then it would be pathway, new pathway, concrete, pavilion, extra benches and sign.
And fencing.
And fence.
That one's there, but that's already in there.
Fencing's already in there.
Easy way would be option one.
Option one, yes.
And additional, um, pavilion, benches and sign.
Okay. Option one. Like I'm not gonna make another motion for like another six months. Okay.
All right. Motion made by Commissioner Sutherland, seconded by Commissioner Bagden. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. All right. Um, item number five, citizen participation.
Nobody, nobody. Oh.
Do we have citizens?
Uh-oh.
Yeah, we do. Hello, citizen.
I'm sorry, the lighting's horrible. Um, the motion, should that include the price? Or is it in the option?
It's in the option.
It's in the option.
So, so your motion would not.
No, no. No, you're, you're right.
Because I don't, I didn't know if the sign was part of that money. Um, I'm not sure how it would fly with your pavilion not having, um, any details on what that pavilion would cost.
So I think as, as I understood the motion, it would, was an option one, which is the fencing, the pathway. Um, I think that was, let me pull it up.
Yes, 45 yard concrete pathway.
And then, um, in addition to that would be looking at pavilion and benches, um,
signage.
And signage, uh, to be within what we were anticipating, uh, originally anticipating for this project. So I don't, I don't know what that.
Not to exceed $39,240.
Correct. Right. The way I had worded it was, um, with the, something like with the excess funds from the savings going with the new pathway and concrete, which is like a super long way to say it, but that's what I meant.
Okay. And, um, I guess my, I like the idea of you guys talking it through about the concrete because I think concrete's a good way to go and it does look clean. And you guys making the case that this is cheaper in the long run, right? The maintenance is gonna be better. So you need to sell it to the council that, you know, this is the, the best recommendation you had on that. Um, the other part I wanted to, uh, talk about was I love how the fencing is gonna look so nice and clean. That, but are you gonna be able to, how much of this can be completed this fall yet? I know that the, uh, concrete would have to be poured in the next month, right, Nick?
Yeah. We definitely can pull off Somerset. I can tell you right now, I know we don't want to talk too far ahead. Yeah. I know we wouldn't get Pompo completed this year. I can tell you that, but we could get Somerset done. Absolutely. We could get the concrete in, get it poured, all the grass in. Absolutely no doubt with Somerset. I know we're running out of time and these days and weeks matter and these temperatures are gonna fall on us. But we have the month of October, so I know we can get it completed. I know these guys can get it done.
Would that include the concrete for the pavilion though?
The pavilion is gonna be the only question mark. I got a feeling that's probably gonna be a spring project. It's probably gonna be even close or tough even getting a contractor in, uh, this time. But it's nice to have this, this budget money to, to get bids and quotes and have it ready to go as soon as spring breaks the, for the pavilion. Yeah.
And, and looking at the, uh, video, I thought that was great, but I didn't see where you would actually put a pavilion. And the, like the, what, what dimensions were you talking about? You know, 12 by 12?
So I thought would be on the north side of the park, just to the east of the play structure.
Uh-huh. Like closer to the Bumgardner House area?
Nope, the other side.
No.
Wait, not northeast?
North.
This area?
Yeah.
Well, be northeast, yes, but east, uh, northwest, but east of the play structure.
Northwest.
But east of the play structure.
Of the play structure. Oh, okay.
I was, I was. I got it.
The path would then go right up to it, right?
We, we would connect the path into it at that point. Yeah.
Okay. All right. Good.
Well, cause that way people could pull wagons and stuff in there if they needed to and coolers.
Be able to funnel that sidewalk into the pavilion.
Is this the area right here?
Yes.
And then wouldn't you need to include some electrical outlets for a pavilion?
Um.
The, the one.
Not necessarily.
I don't think his.
Yeah.
I mean, it's.
Okay. I'm just trying to think of everything that you might need.
No, that's a good point. Um.
Lighting. I don't know.
We could bring power off the barn if, uh, if needed, power out there.
I, my question would be because that's so close to the neighbors. If somebody came in there and had a party and had a boombox or, you know, whatever, plugging into electricity, it might be too noisy. So if you don't have that option.
I'm just thinking of using my air fryer. I don't know.
As far as renting it? Is that what you meant?
Yeah.
Me?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Because if you had, if you had electricity there, you could have like a loudspeaker, karaoke machine.
I got a feeling residents are probably gonna have to get accustomed to this park being a little bit more live regardless, which is a good.
Well, yeah, don't they, don't they have, um, the activity with the pool right there? They do parties at the pool. So.
Yeah, good point.
Lot of noise there. Okay.
That's on the other side. That's on the, uh, that's on the south side of the, of the pool.
All right. As a citizen, I'll, I'll wrap this up. I think you guys are doing a great job. I can't wait to hear more about Pompo Park. And then moving forward with all the other parks. I think this is a good step. So thank you.
Thank you, citizen.
Nick, can you shoot me over that picture of the Somerset Park? The, the signage that you had?
Send it to you.
Yeah. And once again, that's just.
I had a quick question.
Yeah.
Earlier, I just saw it in my notes. The two light posts at the west end of the park, are they taking those out? The ones that fold?
Yes, 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 yes.
Are you gonna take those out and get rid of them?
Yes, those red ones?
I don't know what color they are, but they're the, they're the fold down type. And, uh, I know the, the one in the, I guess it would be northwest corner. I don't think anything's even holding it up.
You know, I don't even really know where those even came from and why they're there or, um, yeah.
Looks like there used to be lights on the park and then they swing down to change the light bulb. I don't, I don't know if they work. I've never seen them on, but the parks close at dusk. So you don't really need lighting them anymore.
See, that park used to be part of Somerset Swim Club. So that was the property, the park and the parking lot and the pool was part of, was all Somerset Swim Club. And then when they really couldn't afford the taxes and everything else, the city took over the park and the parking lot. And if the pool cannot sustain itself, uh, if it major repairs or anything like that, and they don't have the money, it reverts back to the city and the city will just bulldoze it in.
Well, those are all, there's, I mean, those would have conversations before anything like that happened. But, um, one of those poles, I think it has the emergency speakers on it. I don't know if that's.
Yeah.
Ones that are in the, in the pine trees.
Yeah, those were, yeah, those are coming out. Yeah. I don't know what purpose they ever served really.
Okay.
I don't know if they were.
I just wanted, I was just curious because.
It might've been for the pool.
Noticed in this past summer. Thank you.
Might ask Patrice. She might know.
I mean, I could reach out to DT if it's something that we wanted to consider putting power to the pavilion. We could just get a separate meter drop there. I mean, those options of putting the pool lighting, you know, coming up and down the pathway for at night. I know the park closes down, but it may be nice just to have it lit. So I'll look into all those options. Thank you.
Okay. Item number six, commission members with concerns. All right. I'm gonna have to swipe. Sorry, I'm on my phone. So, um, Commissioner Stein.
Nope, I have nothing. Great job though, um, Nick.
Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Palladi.
Thanks for the support too, the last minute here. Thank you very much.
I too. I also have nothing and thanks, Nick. You guys are doing great.
Uh, Commissioner Ruby.
Uh, nothing. You swayed me, but in the long, in the long run, we're gonna get more. Long as council approves.
Uh, Commissioner Bagden.
No, I have no concerns and thank, I want to thank everybody for all getting along and cooperating so well. Thank you.
Commissioner LaCass?
Um, just nothing, nothing other than Nick and Christina, I think you guys are doing a fantastic job. I really, I, I think it's gonna be beautiful. Can't wait to see what the other parks will be.
Yeah, it's gonna get exciting and we'll get something together and get it over to Mark and see if we can't streamline this and get it approval.
Um, Commissioner Sutherland.
Yeah, I have nothing. Just get excited every time I drive by it. You guys are doing a great job. It's coming together so quickly. So thank you to Nick and Christine for your hard work. It's fantastic.
Thank you. Yeah, we did have a small setback as far as the parts and that's why they kind of pulled off for a short time, but, um, they should be any day.
And I actually have no concerns for once.
Um, okay. Item number seven. Who wants to make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second.
Add.
Oh, man.
6:54.
Motion made by Commissioner Ruby, seconded by Commissioner Palladi. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Bye, guys. See you soon.
Good evening.
Bye, everybody.